Maybe he resigns. I've thought about it.
All right, Jared. It's time. All right. Good evening. And welcome to the regular meeting of the Villa Park City Council, and I hereby call the meeting to order. Jared, will you take role?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilman Barnett.
Present.
Councilman Colacott.
Here.
Councilman Nelson.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Mills.
Here.
Mayor Fasenelli.
Here. All right, at this time, let's see. Councilman Colacott, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes. In remembrance of all of our veterans that have sacrificed so much for us, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, if you have your cellphones with you, if you would kindly silence them so they don't accidentally go off, I welcome you, and so does the entire city council, to our meeting. If you wish to address the council on an item, if you could please submit a blue card that is in the back room with your name and the item that you would like to speak on, and give it to the city manager, that would be great, and that way I can address you and know what everyone put it in some sort of an order. At this time, we are going to have a presentation from the Orange County Fire Authority.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council, and city staff, and citizens of Villa Park. Orange County Fire Authority, Battalion Chief Jeff Howie. Right now, just going over our calls for the past three weeks, we're looking at thirty-nine calls for the area. Nothing quite as interesting as the last time we were up here with the vehicles through the structures and stuff. And just one of the things I wanted to bring up tonight was just our sandbags, and sand is now fully available from Station 23 of Villa Park. And so if anybody has needs to get ready for the winter season coming up, please make your way over to Station 23 and meet the guys over there, and they'll help you out getting your sandbags and sand all loaded up in the car and get it back to your house. You'll get it back to your house safely, but that's all we have tonight.
That's wonderful, and do we still have sandbags left here to be able? Wonderful. Okay, and we're giving out five per resident, in case if anyone needs them, come on here, we have them.
All right.
Thank you so much. All right, next, an update from the Orange County Sheriff's Department.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, City Council. Reporting on the October Part One crimes, we had four total Part One crimes for the month of October. One of them was a commercial burglary. At the Villa Park Pharmacy in the middle of the night, someone smashed a window. Apparently took a, some sort of pharmaceutical product, they valued it a hundred dollars. We had one, two vandalisms, both at C V Middle School, someone graffitied locker room bathroom doors. And then we had one, someone shot a, what they thought was a pellet through someone's front window up on Fleet Drive. Those are the four Part One crimes for this month. Looking at the total numbers from last year, if we're gonna try and gauge, we are hopefully gonna end right around the same numbers as we had last year. We may be a couple of numbers ahead, but we're gonna be in probably the year around the same amount, hopefully, if not less. Any questions for me?
Thank you. All right, not on the agenda is the foundation, who is here to make a presentation, and who is making that presentation from the foundation. I didn't see you guys back there, sorry. Hi. You're hiding? Well, now, guess what? We all see ya. We're gonna have a treat.
Well, actually, we're with the Boat Parade Committee.
Okay.
Really, the foundation.
And we're here to make our annual announcement of the, who is the grand marshal. And of course, I always do it in either song or poem, and this year it's a song. Would you please hold up the trophy? This is my background. It's beginning to look a lot like the yacht parade. Everywhere you go, boats are parked on the streets for days, dippies look the other way, ignoring the seventy-two-hour parking law. It's beginning to look a lot like the yacht parade. Soon the streets will shine so bright, with boats all primed to show, this year's theme, you know, rocking and rolling through the holidays. Ten categories in which to compete will thrill those lined on the street. Then to town center we will go for fun and food to eat. Savory, sweet crafts and fun, the VP Community Bandits. Beginning to look a lot like the yacht parade. Friends and neighbors line our streets. All will wave and cheer our grand marshal as she draws near Julia Peterson. Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah to everyone.
Thank you, Terry. Wonderful, and congratulations to Julia Peterson. Very, very nice. All right, at this time, we are gonna have the public comment session, and the public may address any item that is not on the agenda. And I know there's several people here who want to speak on the item of election of mayor and mayor pro tem, and that item is number nineteen, and if someone wants to speak on the health payment reimbursement policy, that item is item seventeen, so this is not the place to speak about that. This is for items that are not on the agenda. So, what I have here is I have Mr. Vince Rossini, who would like to have public comment on the LIAC committee, if you would approach the podium, please. Excuse me, sir.
You want somebody else to speak in front of me?
Yes, I have, I have someone who is speaking at public comment, and he submitted a blue card.
That's not the way the public comments are structured. You ask people to step forward and I get...
I didn't ask anyone yet to step forward, thank you, sir. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council. I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to provide an update on the accomplishments of the Law Enforcement Advisory Committee, or LIAC. Over the last few months, we've been working on several projects to improve public safety and traffic control in our city. First, I would like to talk about Neighborhood Watch, due in large part to the leadership of LIAC member Wayne Silzel and his wife Mary Silzel, the real workhorse. Neighborhood Watch has increased its membership by nearly twenty percent. I believe the last count, there had a hundred and twenty-five block captains and increasing. That's a whole set of extra eyes and ears supporting the Sheriff's Department to keep our community safe. Along with, excuse me, along with our Neighborhood Watch volunteers, we've added eight new volunteer applicants to our professional safety responder program, or excuse me, professional services responder program. We hope to have these volunteers trained and ready to assist the Sheriff's Department soon. This Saturday, November twenty-first, mark your calendars, at nine AM, the Sheriff's Department will be hosting a recruiting event at their training academy in an effort to recruit and add more highly-trained volunteers to patrol our Orange County, to patrol our community and other Orange County communities. In addition to our efforts to increase community participation in crime prevention, the LIAC has reached out to local law enforcement partners around Orange County to obtain assistance, ideas, and technologies to make our city safer. After the LIAC met with and received a report, and basically an introduction to how Orange County runs its license plate reader program, the grant administrator successfully convinced the LIAC that this is something our community needs to look towards. We unanimously agreed and recommend that the Sheriff's Department and the Villa Park City Council utilize loaner license plate readers to evaluate the use of technology of this technology in our community. These license plate readers are available at no cost for evaluation for a limited period of time, and will provide hands-on experience to allow the Sheriff's Department and the LIAC to make an informed recommendations, as well as the council, regarding this technology and its implementation in not only preventing crime, but potentially solving crime, hopefully we prevent it rather than solve it. But anyways, it's an excellent piece of technology that we feel is certainly worth looking into. In August, the LIAC recommended the purchase of a used patrol car to be used by volunteers on patrol in Villa Park. A resident supported this recommendation and stepped forward with a large donation for the purchase of this patrol vehicle. We are indebted to that gentleman and his family, of course. We are in the final phases of purchasing the patrol car at auction. Lastly, the LIAC is considering a recommendation to add additional law enforcement assets during high-traffic times, and based upon the data provided by the Sheriff's Department, resident complaints, your input, and the committee's, committee members' expertise, additional law enforcement is needed. These additional assets will be used to encourage traffic safety around our schools and to prevent burglaries during the school day when the population of our city effectively doubles. These accomplishments and future accomplishments would not be possible without the training and experience of our Sheriff's Department and the efforts of the resident law enforcement professionals who have volunteered to participate on the, on the Law Enforcement Advisory Committee, and we owe them a debt of gratitude, and I thank them for their participation and giving us of their time. Thank you.
All right, I have a public comment from an Ellen Kincaid on Wellington Circle.
Hi. I have pictures, I don't know if you want me to show you them and then address this. It's about a rental property.
You can give, if you want to give Jared the pictures, that would be great.
I've already been dealing with Jared since October.
Here, you just talk to us and tell us, and give us your comments, as here, thank you.
My comment is that...
Are you, are you Ellen?
Yes, I am.
Thank you.
This is my daughter.
Do you want the address, too?
No, I haven't. Thank you.
This is my daughter, I'm Tammy Kincaid, and my husband was gonna be here tonight, but he had to be going, he's in Hoag for an emergency, so it's very upsetting to be living next to the property that I tried to address to Jared with. I don't know how you want me to present this.
Just tell, just tell us, just tell us your problem, yeah.
It's a, it's a very big nuisance. I brought another property owner that also is in back of the property, that's been rented out to, it was originally five young boys. I'm not even gonna state that they're men, because they're very irresponsible, and there are noise problems, and then the owner, he has trash that's stored over at the side of the yard, and it's been that way since July, and I brought that to Jared's attention and since July.
I think what we've done is exhausted everything.
Everything.
And so here it is, you know, we want to come, do this open mic, you know, this open session, because, I mean, I grew up, went to Villa Park High School, you know, the, what I feel like Villa Park stands for is they want a good community, these are, you know, over a million-dollar homes, you want to keep every, you know, that, having a frat house, it's pretty much a frat house. You can go online and see that they have fraternity parties there. There was about four hundred kids that finally was broken up by the police department, and, you know, you, you paid tribute to the veterans and everything, my husband's gonna deploy soon, and my parents are at a stage where they can't even help me right now, because they're, they're, they're older people living next door to eighteen-year-old boys that are having parties, and these boys do not care, so we've, we've talked to the police tomorrow, there are certain things that can be done, and I don't know if you guys can do anything, but you know, you see the city magazine that comes in, you know, these, these great families, I really highly doubt that any people that live in Villa Park would want a fraternity living next to them. You know, it's, it's caused, my dad's in the hospital today, you know, he's a very laid-back guy, he doesn't, it's just they can't handle it, you know, we have, you know, another person, it's elderly people that live in this community, it's, they, they moved to this community, they've stayed in this community because it's a great community. My grandmother had the house before my parents, and now it's, like I said, we've exhausted, we've talked to, my parents have talked to you, we've talked to the police, there's only certain things that they can do if it's in the, you know, whatever, and then, so we've gone to the university where these kids are, and they are the only ones that have actually helped, but here it is going forward, like, I'm asking your help, is there anything that you can do, because, like I said, my husband's gonna deploy to Iraq, I need my parents, you know, sorry.
No, it's okay, all right. It sounds like you have a public, you have a public nuisance issue, and the first step is certainly to go to the city manager. After that, the next step is to, we have a community development...
Okay.
...committee, and that's where this issue would go to. And then it comes to us, it needs to go to that committee, and Jared will, you know, will do the appropriate document, will do the appropriate documents, but there is a process that has to happen.
Okay.
And that process does start with the city manager. If it's something that's illegal, yes, of course, you call the, then, if it's something that's illegal, the sheriff certainly can be called out, and they will take care of it, but if you feel there's a public nuisance, he will explain the process to you and walk you through it.
And another thing I want to add, it is a public nuisance because they leave their trash cans out, and I know this seems kind of petty, but they leave their trash cans out, and it makes it real hard for the workers to bring their trash cans around, to pick our trash cans up. These boys are eighteen to twenty years old, and they can't even take their trash in and out, and, but yet us elderly people, we can take our trash in and out. These boys' comments to my other daughter was that they couldn't afford to have the trash company pick up, but yet they can put on these frat parties every three to four days. It's like, it's exhausting. And then my comment from Jared was, we'll call the cops. I'm supposed to call the cops every time? It gets, it gets, I'm sure I'm wearing the police officers down with, with me calling. I'm, I'm getting to feel like I'm a nuisance. Now, my husband, he's in, in the hospital, you know, it, it's wearing on us. It's wearing on her because she's got two little kids that want to come over to Nana's house, and I'm saying no, because you hear this profanity music over there blasting on stereos that are like this. It's horrible! And my son-in-law is, is serving our country, and I'm just asking for some peace.
I understand.
Let me, can I make a comment here? You know, the calls to the police are logged, and a record's maintained of how often this is occurring, they then make their reports, and frankly, that helps you build a record that other people can look at to take action on, and if you don't feel like you're getting sufficient response from city staff, you're certainly welcome to contact any of the council members directly.
And the kids are smart, too, because my parents, they're older, they go to bed at like seven, so now they're not even starting their parties anymore until midnight, so my parents don't know what's going on, but now it's affecting the other people on the other streets, because they're parking their cars over there, and it's like, come on.
Every neighbor needs to, it's, yeah, we just want you to go through the process.
It's not an item we can act on, okay? We can't do anything tonight.
But that's good advice.
I just want to let you know about the record, and number two, if you're not satisfied with the response you're getting from city staff, you have every right to contact the city council members individually, and they can certainly talk to you all they want, and so...
But it is a, it is a process, unfortunately.
Another comment I want to say is this owner, I have tried on the telephone to contact him over and over, he will not return my calls.
This isn't gonna go anywhere.
Yeah, it's just a process.
You need, you need to get your record, deal with it here, and if you're not satisfied, you can contact city council, or you can contact any of us.
All right. If I may add, make sure that the complaints are lodged by you, as well as your neighbors, not just yourself. So if there are other people who have the complaints, they need to lodge them, too.
All right.
Okay, it, it makes a big difference.
I appreciate it.
The better the record, the easier to deal with it.
Thank you.
I also have a Duncan Kade and a Tammy Dustin. Was that, are we all good? Okay, all right, I have two there, okay. Okay, if there's anyone else who'd like public comment who did not have a blue card up here, please step to the podium.
Vince, from Congressman Walters, Mimi Walters' office is also here. Would this be appropriate time for him to speak?
No, I haven't, he can come up.
Okay.
Later. Okay, go ahead. I'm not gonna send it back again.
Good evening. My name is Jim Warden, 1002 on Sycamore Street, here in Villa Park. I'm here to discuss very specifically the payment records of our city mayor pertaining to the group insurance provided by the city.
This is item seventeen.
This has nothing to do with policy. It's your personal payment records, nothing else, not policy, not procedure.
Okay.
Currently, current and past city council members are given an opportunity to participate in the pers health insurance pool on a pass-through basis for personal health coverage.
Is this on the health insurance policy, sir?
A monthly invoice is generated by the city...
Mr. Warden, I'm gonna have to ask you to come back on item seventeen.
It's not about policy.
It's regarding the...
It does not direct, it is not about policy.
Sir.
It is your personal payment record, made available to me under a FOIA request.
We're gonna allow Mr. Warren to speak for the safety of everyone in the room.
Safety, thank you.
You're welcome.
Premiums, monthly invoices are generated by city finance director for council members, and council members are expected to remit payments to the city in a timely manner. Premiums not paid within fifteen days are subject to a ten percent late fee, no interest is charged, nor is the city expected to provide short-term loans for unpaid balances. Mayor Fasenelli is also the representative of the Budget and Finance Committee, which oversees the treasury and finance functions of Villa Park. Mayor Fasenelli is also the city council representative on the Human Resources Committee, which provides oversight of city staff. I received the following information as a result of a fifty-one-page release of FOIA requests that contain the documents of Mayor Fasenelli's personal records for her pers family health insurance. The payment dates, amounts, and correspondence between the mayor and city staff are documented in this FOIA request. In November two thousand fourteen, Mayor Fasenelli enrolled in a family health plan. In January two thousand fifteen, mayor was two months in arrears and paid the November, December premiums on June, on January twenty-one. The February premiums were paid on April the eighth. The February, the January payments were paid on April the eighth, the February premiums were paid on May the fourth, the March and April payments were paid on July one. On June twenty-ninth, after an eighth month of coverage, the mayor canceled the insurance coverage. The mayor then paid late fees for premiums due February, on May fourth, and March and April late fees on July one. On September ninth, two, two and a half months after cancellation of coverage, the May and June premiums were paid, along with late fees in the amount of four thousand six hundred eighty-nine dollars and eight cents. While the mayor eventually paid all of the premiums due, as well as late fees, these patterns of habitual late payments over ten months caused the city to use city funds to pay the health insurance premiums until these premiums were collected and paid for. As reflected in the information contained in the FOIA request, it would certainly be uncomfortable for city staff to be in the position of having to be a bill collector with the mayor. Given the dollar amounts, which are thousands of dollars, and the nature of these delinquent payments, city staff and budget and finance committee members, in execution of their fiduciary responsibilities, must have been aware of these ongoing issues. On June twenty-ninth, there was an inquiry by the Orange County DA's office with the city finance director. In September nineteenth, the city audit was conducted by Gruber and Associates, an outside independent firm cited the late insurance health premium issues of city council members. Reference the annual city CAFR report dated October nineteenth. In my opinion, the actions of Mayor Fasenelli were not one-time events, but an ongoing ten -month failure to pay in a timely manner. The optics of these inappropriities gives the appearance of the using city funds for non-city obligations and can't be condoned or go unnoticed. In my view, the pattern of habitual late payments should be seen as a violation of the public trust and a breach of ethics by the mayor. In the best interest and service to the citizens of city of Villa Park, Mayor Fasenelli should immediately resign her position on the Budget and Finance Committee. Thank you.
All right, anybody else have any other public comment?
I'm also talking about the finance situation.
Your name?
Mar, excuse me, Mary Beth Felsen.
Thank you very much.
And you have my address, correct?
I don't need it, thank you.
I would like to express my concern about loose management of city finances. This is a comment made by Mayor Fasenelli and city manager Jared Hildebrand at the last city council meeting. I listened to what was going on, but that really caught my attention, loose management of city finances. Is that a common financial management approach for cities? Is using city funds to cover a city council person's medical insurance premiums an accountable, a acceptable management approach, even if the funds were repaid when the audit was conducted? Is the city of Villa Park in the business of making loans? That's what I'd like to know about. Where was the city manager when all this was happening? Where was the finance director when all this was happening? Where was the finance committee when all this was happening? We, the residents, have a right to ask for a full and public accounting. We need to know the facts, we shouldn't prejudge anyone. But, so I would like to recommend a special meeting, city council meeting be called, where we have time given to explain the facts and allow for public comment, because the, this time is too small. And I'd like to suggest that Councilman Nelson chair the meeting and present the facts, since he is not involved in this action and is very familiar with city finances. Let's just clear the deck on the situation and make the, make the facts public. Thank you very much.
Next, on public comment.
Mick Goldberg?
Yeah.
Given that my comments actually aren't about the, the policy either, but about what happened, I was asked to read a letter from Villa Park resident Marilyn Bailey, eighteen-eight fifty-two Mesa Drive, which reads as follows. Dear Jared and all, as a forty-year resident of this wonderful little city, I am appalled to read that we... to read that we have elected officials who are guilty of ethical violations. How can a mayor or councilman in good conscience not pay their obligations in a timely manner? The insurance option is a benefit for each elected official if they care to participate, but they must pay their share of premium in a timely manner. From my understanding, this has not been the case for the mayor or several others. The fact that Ms. Facinelli has canceled the insurance and has finally brought her account current does not dismiss the fact that she was in violation. This is not setting a good example for our community. Therefore, I strongly feel that under the circumstances, she should resign from her position immediately. Signed, Marilyn Bailey. And I had a comment of my own under the same topic. I wanted to talk about the issue that came out of the recent financial audit and the findings that Mayor Facinelli was using city funds to pay for her family's health care. It was very uncomfortable to watch city council last month as Councilman Colacott sought to understand where the system failed us with regard to this matter. It appeared that some thought it was an unproductive exercise. Some probably looked at the situation and said, eh, it's not a big deal. But it is. It's an indicator of integrity or lack thereof. Once someone thinks it's okay for the city to cover around $7,000 in personal expenses, it might be easy to make a leap to larger amounts. There's a saying, "You are who you are when no one is looking." Well, Mayor Facinelli, this situation revealed your lack of ethics. You showed this city what you are about, that you allowed this to happen, and that you put our city staff in this position. And also that you made good on your payments once it came out that you were about to be revealed for having stayed in arrears for as long as you did. The fact that you paid all those late fees is irrelevant. They should have never occurred. The fact of the matter is that this is not the first time we've been disappointed by you. I've had the opportunity to observe you for a long time now, over a year. And quite frankly, I don't understand why you want to represent Villa Park. I was part of a group of concerned citizens that came to you over a month ago with problems related to traffic around the schools. You advised us to apply for permit parking. Well, we did, and we had a near-unanimous vote on our streets. And when we came to city council to get that approved, you voted us down. And then, not only that, you actively worked against us with a group that opposed us and signed a change.org petition that was working against us. You've been quoted in local newspapers, speaking of your residents in a disparaging manner. And at the October council meeting, you even asked us if we could be pleasant to outsiders who are coming to enjoy our Halloween fest. I don't know what you think of us, that you would behave in this manner and speak of us in this manner. So I don't understand why you even want to be here and representing us as a council member or as our mayor. Given all of the above, I think we'd all be better off if you vacate your seat and let someone serve who really believes in Villa Park and its residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Now I really feel short. Hi, my name is Karen Goldberg. I'm a Villa Park resident of four years, 10882 Vita Drive. I am a mother. I'm a teacher and a mother of three kids that go to Villa Park Elementary and as well as Saravilla Middle School. Thank you very much for giving me the time to talk. Mine is about agenda items and how very proud I am of this council for all their agenda items and for dealing with very hard issues that have come up between the city. And I know all of you, I sat here and watched all of you swear in and swear to be, to represent the community of Villa Park, and not just a few on certain streets, not the young, the old, not the busy and the unbusy, but everybody in Villa Park. And I commend that the agenda items so far have been very nice and very good and very productive. But tonight's agenda items, I find that they're not in what I feel that is representative of the Villa Park citizens. There is one particular item on here that has shown, in the scope of things, of all the things that we have to talk about, which is, my kids go to elementary school. Sometimes when I walk into the bathrooms, there is yellow construction tape all over, every single stall except for maybe one. The soap dispensers in the schools, they're nonexistent. There's one bathroom that has a jar of soap, and it's got mold. It's green. It's like a jar of, you know, just those softs, soap that you get at the grocery store, and it's pure green. And the students are going there and they have to wash their hands with it. It makes absolutely no sense to me, especially in such a city that is considered to be a very well-off city. And I don't understand this. And then, as I, you know, sort of to understand Villa Park a little bit, I got to see that it's a very difficult issue. So our schools are falling apart, and I'm coming from a city of North Tustin, which we just redid our beautiful high school, and we love it, and home prices are soaring, where I'm finding here that they're stagnating a little bit. North Tustin is beating us by bounds on the sales of homes. And the agenda items tonight just don't make sense, because some of the agenda items are talking about something that hasn't damaged our city. There's no damage here, none whatsoever. I don't see any financial damage. I don't see anything, and as we're talking, I think, about the insurance premiums. There is no damage to Villa Park. Fees have been paid, and when someone has, someone switches insurance, it makes total sense to me that sometimes you pay insurance in three months, six months premiums, sometimes you pay it monthly. Everybody's different, and every insurance company is different. And when you switch jobs, insurance, things can get lost, especially if a job that is so full of so much of problems that need to be solved. It's very easy to get behind in bills. And I don't think there's not one of us here in Villa Park that has not been behind in a bill. And as a citizen, I personally really think that there's no damages here to the city, there's no intent to damage the city. And why are we talking about this agenda item? It is not when we have so much more to talk about. I think priorities are totally skewed. And as a concerned citizen, I have to work out every day. I come home, and I just had to leave a debate between my two kids about their homework. And I have to come here to tell you and all of you that this makes absolute no sense to me. You should be working on getting clean soap in our schools. You should be working on making sure that the people want to be partners with Orange Unified and not be divisive. You are responsible for all that, for the problems that are happening now, because you're bringing up items that have not damaged our city, that the average citizen does not care about. And I'm very concerned that this council is very inadequate now and not addressing the real needs of Villa Park residents. And I know a lot of people that feel the same way. Let's get back to the real stuff that is important to our city and that we demand that you guys get onto real agenda items and stop the silly baby stuff, because we're not going to handle it. We're not going to take it anymore. And if it's on the agenda next week, I'm going to get everybody here, and we're going to talk about it. And thank you for listening to me.
Thank you. In fairness, I have two other people who wanted to talk on item 17, and that would be Sandra Merg and General Ed Berry. So since I've had other people come up, if you'd like to speak now, you are welcome to.
I just had one question. The one who pays all the bills is the Finex director. Do they pay all the bills for everything?
I'm not here to answer the questions during public comment, Mrs. Merg.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry.
All right, I didn't know, because I wondered if you had, you know...
We can't answer questions here, but if you have a comment, please, by all means.
You do comment.
We'll be happy to listen.
Okay. Thank you.
Are we going to do 17 now?
I'm just giving you the time. Are you, Mr. Berry?
Yeah.
Go ahead and speak, since I allowed everyone else to speak on that item. That way, it's fair to everyone, and then we can continue on. Thank you.
I was speaking on, General Berry, Adams Road.
Thank you, sir.
I'm speaking basically on the recommendation that you made. The background, my background is military, and my background in the military is 33 years, mostly acquisition procurement. And what I'm concerned about, after I was here for the other meeting, I came here and you let me talk about the park, and I appreciate the action you're taking on that, reducing the water in the interim. Then I listened to the discussion. In the military, Congress allocates money by subject areas. And so I'll give you a specific example to make it sense. I'm managing a contract with a Boeing company, and Boeing's building an airplane, that's one fund. Boeing's repairing another airplane, that's a separate fund. And I'm doing research and development to build a third airplane, and that's a third fund. I can't mix those funds. If you mix those, that's called anti-deficiency. And in the military, on the far, the federal acquisition regulations, that's actually a criminal offense if I borrow money from one account to pay for another account because I'm short money or I'm using somebody else's money. Okay, so I thought about that. I went over and spent some time with Jared, who explained to me what the process was. And he basically said, "Well, it's a common practice to basically give us a shortfall, like the case of the indebtedness, of covering your indebtedness for the time period with using taxpayers' money on Villa Park, was a common practice." And so I said, "Okay, I accepted that." And I said, "Is that a law?" And he's not sure. Check with the council. I checked with the council here before the meeting, and she was nice enough to say, "Actually, there's not a law on it. It is, may not be the best thing, but there's no law on it." So I really fall down to, there's a recommendation that you made to have a regulation written on that one. To me, one of the biggest tests that I faced in the military when you came down to decision was, when you make that decision, can you stand to see it in the LA Times or the Washington Post on the front page? That's a pretty good test, actually. And as some of the previous speakers have talked about, I'm living here, I had choice. I could live anywhere in the country when I retired. I picked Villa Park. There's a lot of good reasons for that. But one of the big things about it is the integrity of the city and the ethics. That's something I really believe very strongly in. And I think we're wrong if we're allowing to be in an area where we don't have law coverage and we're actually allowing taxpayers' funds to be used to cover shortages of other people who should be paying before we use the taxpayers' money. Because I think it gives a very bad appearance, and it's really not the right thing to go do. So I'm hoping that when this proposal comes forward, that you ask for, that the recommendation would be a regulation not to use Villa Park taxpayers' funds to cover personal indebtedness of Villa Park employees. I hope it reads something along those lines, because I really believe, using the terminology, that common practice is not a good thing. It's something I don't want to read about. It certainly brings up questions of ethics and appropriability of money, and that's something I would like to basically see if we can take common practice out of the way we manage monies here in Villa Park. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We are now going to go to our public hearings. And we need to have...
Pardon me, Mayor Facinelli. I did not realize you were going to be moving item 17 up, so I would like to go ahead and speak to that, if you don't mind.
Who are you?
Well, I am Deborah Polly.
Oh!
And I live at 18122 Gloria Circle. And as you well know, I served for eight years as a council member here in this city.
Walk back.
And I, yes, and I had a lovely time doing it. Thank you. Thank you for both the yays and the boos. It means I have made a strong impression, and that does matter to me. I have stayed away, allowed you guys to do your job. I did my eight years, and I've disagreed with some of what you've done, and I've agreed with some of what you've done. But I am here tonight because I'm extremely concerned about what I'm hearing and what I've learned about through studying the documentation of unpaid health premiums that the city has been carrying on behalf of the mayor, month after month after month. To me, this is a clearly fiscal malfeasance, particularly since the one that is providing the oversight on the finance committee is the mayor who appointed herself to that committee. I believe that this probably would have never come to light if it had not been mentioned in the audit. And in eight years of reading the audits and also sending the audits to someone who's a professional to help me, you know, be sure that I'm not missing anything, this is probably the worst thing that's ever been pointed out, that we are, as a city, as citizens, as taxpayers, covering unpaid health premiums, particularly for a seated mayor, particularly for a seated mayor who's clearly in a council majority, because I've been watching, and Greg Mills, and Diana Facinelli, and Rick Barnett, walk in lockstep, right, wrong, or indifferent. You guys are a little cabal. And this was very wrong. And, Mr. Barnett, you sit on the finance committee with your dear friend, Ms. Facinelli. And clearly, as an attorney, you understand your fiduciary duty to call something out, whether they're your friend or not. I honestly believe the best thing that could happen is for one of the two of you to step down and allow someone else, probably Bill Nelson would be the best position to do that because of his expertise, to sit there on the finance committee and make sure that the oversight is provided and that your friend, because we need someone who's ethical and moral to do this. The other thing is the uncomfortable situation that you place our city manager in and our city staff in, because they know, they are beholden to you for their jobs, particularly our city manager who serves at the pleasure of the council. And he can count to three. He can count to three. Every city manager in the country knows how to count to the majority, and they would not do anything to offend you for fear that he might lose his job, even though I know, he knows, it was absolutely wrong to allow you to be in arrears over and over and over again and to not charge you for fines and fees. And you are the only seated council member who's doing this. Yes, there are some retirees that have been in arrears occasionally for a couple hundred bucks, but not thousands of dollars. This is a serious situation. And now I find out that the administrative clerk has been placed on administrative leave based until an investigation can take place. I believe it has to do with this item. I am here to say, the wrong person is being investigated here. Absolutely, the wrong person is being investigated. It should not be an underling who is simply doing her job. It certainly should be the mayor who was abusing her position of power and authority and the public trust. I honestly think that this is one of the worst things I've seen a seated council member ever do, because you're taking advantage of your position, and you're taking advantage of the taxpayer dollars. It needs to stop. You need to come clean on it, and you shouldn't be punishing the wrong person. Just come clean. People make mistakes. This was a big one.
Thank you. Going to close public comment and move on to public hearings. I'm going to waive reading in full of all ordinances and resolutions on the agenda.
Excuse me, Mayor. We do have one other, I don't know, Vince, did you fill out a card?
Excuse me. Do we have a presentation, Jared, that I don't know about?
I was informed about this 10 minutes ago. Maybe 45 when the meeting started. Can you come up and speak during public comment?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council members. Now, this, you know, I could hold off on doing this until after the meeting, you know, just for the sake of, you know...
In the future, though, would you, typically when we have an office or the government come up with a presentation, we have some sort of warning at this point. Obviously, Mr. Colacott knew, and I didn't. So please, go ahead.
All right, well, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council members. You know, I'm here on behalf of the Office of Congressman Walters. I'll go ahead and make my presentation, you know, very quick. We're just here to congratulate Councilmember Bill Nelson on his recent election to President of the California Association of Special Districts. I have here with me a certificate of recognition from our office, as well as from the office of State Senator John Warlock. And we, you know, we just wanted to present this to him as a small token of our congratulations and, you know, as well as to thank him for the work he has done for the community.
Okay. Thank you.
I want all the council to know I had absolutely nothing to do with this.
All right. For the third time, do we have a motion to waive reading in full of all ordinances and resolutions on the agenda? Okay.
Let me go back. Sorry about that. Mayor Protem Mills.
Yes.
Barnett?
Councilman Barnett?
Yes.
Councilman Colacut?
Yes.
Councilman Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Fasenelli?
Yes.
Carries five zero.
All right. Item number four, consideration of variance permit number seven six nine at eighteen five ninety-two Mendocino Circle. The applicant, Mr. Robert Singh, please, I'm sorry if I did say it incorrectly. And if we could have a staff report on that?
It's Rachel. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. The variance application for you this evening for your consideration involves one eighty-five ninety-two Mendocino Circle, a single-family detached residence that is currently being renovated. Specifically, the variance application is a request to allow a front yard fence to be taller than the forty-two inch maximum height that's permitted within the first twenty feet of the front yard setback. What the property owner is proposing to do is a sixty-six inch fence along the front property line and portions of the side property lines that include decorative pilasters, wrought iron fencing, and two sliding gates. Ordinarily, variance approvals are granted when city staff determines that there are special physical conditions that are inherent with the property that would preclude the property owner from complying with the provisions of the zoning ordinance, and in this case, of course, is the fence. For this proposal, staff did not find anything in particular with the property itself to provide relief from this fencing requirement. However, the property is unique in that it is the only parcel within this fifteen-lot subdivision of track fifty-five sixty-four that directly faces and is exposed to three streets, and that would be Mendocino Circle, Mendocino, Mendocino Circle, Flint Ridge Drive, and Santiago Boulevard. So due to the close proximity to these streets, the property owner is requesting that the fence be taller to maximize security and protection for his residents and for his family. As far as the design of the front yard fence, you can see from the plans that were provided to you that the, that there are decorative support columns, as I mentioned earlier, that will be constructed of stone veneer and caps. While the portions that are solid will be finished with stucco to match the exterior of the residence in color and texture. The top bar of the wrought iron fence and sliding gates will be designed with a slight arch to give it some appeal and some interest to the streetscape. On October fifth, this variance application was presented to the CDC. And in short, they were in support of the request so long as the fencing that's proposed be at least fifty percent open. And city staff did look at the plans and determined that it is approximately sixty percent open. So as required by code, public hearing notices were mailed to property owners within three hundred feet of the subject property ten days prior to this meeting. And staff did receive feedback from residents that are in close proximity to this property. You should have a copy of a letter that was provided by residents within the neighbor that were, in the neighborhood that were opposed to this application, and it's signed by three of the residents. And also, the applicant, Mr. Singh, who is here momentarily, provided a letter that was signed by three property owners in the area that are in support of this application. And that concludes my brief staff report, and I'll be happy to answer any questions at this time.
I see that two of these on the, living right on, actually on Mendocino, those are neighbors, is that correct?
Yes.
Those are direct neighbors. And Flint Ridge is also a direct neighbor?
Correct, yes.
Yes.
If I may jump in here, Mendocino's a corner property. He has two neighbors to the west. Those are, it looks like, in favor of the project.
Yes.
And then the homes to the east are opposed to it. There is a conflict with the petition. The house at one zero two one six Flint Ridge signed both in favor of the project and in opposition of the project.
Interesting. I'd like to make a, one correction to the staff report. The Community Development Public Safety Committee supported the applicant, pending approval of the adjacent residents. And, you know, so that's part of the question that we have today is, it appears that there's, some residents are for, some are against.
Can I ask, at the CDC meeting, were there any residents present other than the applicant? Is the applicant here today? Can we, can the applicant come and speak? If he'd like to? Thank you very much.
Thanks. Well, I mean, I feel that this is a little bit tense over here, and the first time I'm attending the meeting.
This will move, this will move up for you. There you go. Thank you, sir. Just tell us, tell us what you're doing and-
Okay. Well, I'm just building a house at one eight five nine two Mendocino Circle. And I only, for your help, just need those pillars to be a little bit higher. And I'm not making a brick wall, I'm not making a fence which is six feet or seven feet tall around the house. And I just need the pillar height to be a little higher, which will actually, well, I can't honestly stop anyone to jump the fence, but maybe let it make it a little difficult for them. And it was like two weeks ago, some small instance, I was at my cousin's house in Fountain Valley. And so we all were there about two weeks ago and, and I heard a noise in one of the other rooms. I entered the room, I didn't find anything missing, but when my cousin came, I mean, she said, hey, you know, my laptop is gone. So, you know, even though we've all, seven, eight guys present in the house, someone has the courage to, you know, actually snatch that laptop out of it. I mean, things would happen. I hope nothing happens bad to anyone. But there are things that happened when I was going around talking to Jim, which is my neighbor. I mean, when we, he was trying to get all the signatures from the next door neighbors, right? I mean, he mentioned that, that his house was broken into, the person on the right was housebroken. So what I'm doing is, I basically, I'm trying to make sure, because my older mother, I mean, she's disabled, seventy-two-year-old. I have a five-year-old younger daughter, a wife. I travel for business purposes. I have a couple of businesses myself locally. So I'm just a busy guy. I'm, sometimes I'm home, sometimes I'm not home. I just want my family to be secure. And at the same time, keeping a concentration, I'm not building a wall. It's a pillar height, which I just need about maybe, maybe foot and a half. And that's what I'm, I mean, I'll be very thankful if you guys accept that.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate that. I'm going to open up public comment on this. I don't have any blue cards, but if anybody here would like to speak on this item? Okay, seeing none. I'm going to bring it back to council. Does anyone have any questions for staff or the CDC regarding this?
Well, it appears that, you know, clearly, we've got a, some residents that are in support of this, this application and, or this for a variance and others that are opposed.
Am I reading this correctly? We have two that are opposed and two that are for it?
Yeah.
Am I right? Okay.
One is both ways.
Right. I didn't count that one.
Okay. One is both ways.
What's the latest date on that?
I think we need to, we need to go back and get this resolved with the residents and see if there's, you know, a way that we can work something out that's mutually agreeable. You know, and a staff can, can work with them. That's what I would suggest that we do.
Did you find that, that it's, it beats the sixty percent or something like that? I mean, as far as openness, it's-
Yeah, I went ahead and did a rough calculation of what's solid and netted that out and what was left in the balance. And it was about sixty percent of the total fence area that they're proposing.
And this is facing a fairly busy street, correct? Santiago?
Santiago is, yeah, it's a condition that is kind of unique to that, just that one parcel because I looked at all the other lots within that fifteen-lot subdivision and that there wasn't any lot that was quite like that one.
And it looks at the CDC met and they agreed with this as long as the gates were at least fifty percent open. So they exceeded what the CDC requested because it's sixty percent.
And pending the, you know, the approval of the adjacent residents.
Well, we got, we have half the staff.
Is the adjacent residents, I guess, I guess one, one that's across the street, is that right, Bob? One of the detractors?
Well, the, the house in question is on the corner of Mendocino and Flint Ridge, is it?
Flint Ridge, yes.
Okay. So-
It's one of their construction, yes.
Yeah, so there's, they're adjacent residents on the other side of Flint Ridge and there are adjacent residents that are down on Mendocino, so. They're both adjacent.
There's no greater to the north, to the south, or not on this petition. Each adjacent neighbor has a different opinion.
I think this is a very difficult piece of property here. You're on a very busy street. We do have a few homes who's, who's put very decorative walls up there. I sympathize with the two neighbors who object to it. But I have two neighbors who don't object to it. I don't necessarily know if we'll get four people who agree. And when I see the recommendation here, this is initially from the CDC, I think that they've exceeded the opening by ten percent. I'd like to make a motion to, to move this and approve this. Actually, I'm not liking, I am making a motion.
I'll, I'll second.
Okay, the motion on the floor is to approve resolution two thousand fifteen thirty-three forty-five approving variance number zero seven six nine, a request to exceed the forty-two inch maximum height requirement within the first twenty feet of the front yard setback. Mayor Fasenelli?
Yes.
Councilman Nelson?
Yes.
Councilman Colacut?
Yes.
Councilman Barnett?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Mills?
Yes.
The motion carries five zero.
All right, we're going to move on to our consent calendar. And all items on the consent calendar are considered routine and enacted by one-
Number five. Number five, Madam-
Oh, excuse me. I'm so sorry.
Yeah.
Number five, consideration of ordinance number two thousand fifteen dash five ninety-six, amending chapter, what is that, fourteen twenty-four of the Villa Park Municipal Code Regarding Water-Efficient Landscape. Staff report, please.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. The city is required to update our ordinance, our water-efficient landscape ordinance as part of the Governor Brown's drought declaration. The ACCOC, the Associated California Cities Orange County, led the development of the required updates. A stakeholder committee helped craft this OC model, which is considered a regional ordinance for use by cities throughout the county. Members of the committee included the ACCOC, city planners, water agencies, building industry association, and irrigation consultants throughout the county. The committee met seven times since July twenty-first, two thousand fifteen, to make these necessary revisions. Since Villa Park previously adopted this Orange County model, the regional approach in two thousand and ten, we are required to make these updates and they must be adopted by February first, two thousand sixteen. The generalized list of differences has been provided to you in the staff report. And my recommendation is that we approve the first reading of ordinance number two thousand fifteen five ninety-six, set December fifteenth, two thousand fifteen, as second reading and adoption.
I'm going to open up public comment on this item. Is there anyone who'd like to speak on this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to council. Any discussion?
I have a question. Jared, do we really have much of a choice here?
No, sir. Our choice is to go with the state and implement the state's model ordinance, implement this regional model ordinance, or come up with an ordinance of our own.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
Do I have a motion?
I have a motion. I move it, please.
I'll second.
Okay.
Let me read the title if you don't mind. Motion is to approve the first reading of ordinance number two thousand fifteen five ninety-six, an ordinance to the city council of the city Villa Park, amending chapter twenty-four of the Villa Park Municipal Code Regarding the Adoption of a Water-Efficient Landscape Ordinance. Mayor Protem Mills?
Yes.
Councilman Nelson?
Yes.
Councilman Colacut?
Yes.
Councilman Barnett?
Yes.
Mayor Fasenelli?
Yes.
Motion carries five oh.
All right, we're going to move to the consent calendar. Again, all items on the consent calendar are considered routine and enacted by one motion approving the recommended action listed on the agenda. Any member, staff, city council, or the public can request for an item to be removed from the consent calendar. So we have item six through fifteen as council members. Is there any item that you'd like removed?
I would like to pull number-
All right. Any others?
Here. I'd like to pull number fifteen.
Okay.
And, I'm sorry, number, number twelve, it is, number twelve as well.
Okay. Do I have a motion to accept six, seven, eight, nine, eleven, thirteen, and fourteen?
Yes.
Motion is approved. The remainder of the consent calendar, Councilman Barnett?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Mills?
Yes.
Councilman Colacut?
Yes.
Councilman Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Fasenelli?
Yes. All right, let's go to item ten. Councilman Barnett?
Yep. In fact, you can, items ten and twelve, I'm just looking at my notes here, they're really, they're really one and the same for me. Item ten is approval of the, of the council minutes. And my only comment is with regard to the section where we talk about drafting, the language for drafting of the ordinances that we went through. And I believe what I had proposed at the last meeting and we went with was that ordinances, and you can say quote to this if you want, quote, "Ordinances shall be prepared or reviewed by the city attorney," close quote. And I don't think that's the way it read. I, I don't know if it's a typo or what it was, but I do have in my notes here that it didn't seem to read that way. And that's a common issue to ten, which has the minutes, and twelve, which actually has the ordinance. It was very simple, just either prepared by or reviewed by the city attorney.
In, in number twelve, which is the actual ordinance itself, the first line reads, "All ordinances shall be prepared or reviewed by the city attorney." So that's what we'll be adopting tonight.
Okay.
The minutes don't reflect that, you're saying?
I think there's, yeah, I'm not sure. Let me see if I can get to them here. It's a little hard around this.
Oh, got it.
I'm reading from my notes.
On page five of the minutes, I recognize the, the correction. Councilman Barnett suggested it read, "Prepared or reviewed." The minute say, "By staff and/or the city attorney." We'll just take out my staff.
Yeah, just, it was just to either be prepared by or reviewed by the city attorney. That was my only comment, so with that, I'll-
Can I make one? Also, that's for ten and twelve both, right?
Right.
Just on twelve, just, the permittee has one hundred and eighty days. It's on the third paragraph, right below number two. Just a small typo.
You need to write the word days on it.
Yeah, got it. That's it. Okay. That's all I had on that.
All right, do I have a motion to-
Yep, I was making that motion. I'll move, move those items.
Each one or both?
Both.
Second.
Motion is to approve items ten and twelve. Councilman Barnett?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Mills?
Yes.
Councilman Colacut?
Yes.
Councilman Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Fasenelli?
Yes.
Carries five oh.
All right, item number fifteen, Councilman Nelson?
I pulled this item because the, the physical impact, it asked to formulate a budget adjustment for this amount. And talking to Jared, this issue came up, I guess, after the budget was done, so it's not a budgeted item. But I was wondering why it wouldn't have a use contingency rather than a budget adjustment because we do have a contingency fund in our budget.
And, and my rebuttal to that is it would deplete my contingency, so I would like some for the next six months before I'm asking for a budget adjustment.
A contingency is just that for contingency. Use it as it come up. You don't make budget adjustments and save the contingency fund.
Sure.
If you run out of contingency fund, then you do a budget adjustment.
Sure.
So I would suggest that we use, use this out of contingency fund, not do budget adjustment. I made the recommendation to increase our contingency fund during the budget just for I made the recommendation to increase our contingency fund during the budget just for this. Yet now you still don't want to use it for that.
I've, I've been using it, but I didn't want to use $60,000 all at once.
You, you use it when it comes up, that's what it's for.
It, it makes no difference to me if that's the-
Well, my recommendation would be that we approve this and use the contingency fund to fund it. And that's my motion.
I, I, I have to apologize. I have, I should have pulled this one as well, because I do have some notes on this one.
Oh.
Okay.
You know, I mean, so let me add this. There's some real flexible termination rights in this contract where anybody can basically, either party can terminate it. And I have a suggestion here that the contracts should be performed within a specified time, and if not performed, shouldn't be payment, and there should be a penalty for dilatory performance. Take a look at my notes here.
This is our standard form contract?
Yeah.
It seemed unusual to me that we would contract with that kind of flexibility. If there's a brief, if they, if they terminate, we, we really don't have any choice but to go rebid and deal with the fallout and costs and consequences of that.
Is this our standard contract, Jared? Okay, so just something just right now?
My understanding, this is, this is probably our standard contract, is that we use all these type of agreements. And so one's gonna prove-
Which is fine, we're questioning the language now.
I don't care if we always use it.
Well, I, I'm, I'm just saying, it's always used. If you want to change it, we can change it. But I'm just saying, it, it's a contract that we usually use, and one's been approved, uh, soon by our council.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I just think it's all unusual for a city to enter into a contract with a contractor and then let the contractor walk at any time he wants out of the contract with no, with no penalties, no sanction, and leaves the city having to rebid. I mean, that, you know that's gonna be expensive, so if I've misread it, so be it, but-
Like the Cannon Wall, yeah.
Is there something else in there, Megan, that we're missing?
Yes.
No, I mean, it's... Councilmember Barnett, can you, I'm sorry, I'm staring at the city manager's computer. Can you say what term you're looking at specifically?
Yeah, let me, let me take a look. I'm just reading, I'm reading from my notes, so let me pull it open.
I'm trying to find the term.
Unfortunately, I don't have access to the internet. I always realize that when I get here, and I don't want to interrupt the meeting and have you announce the password out loud, so I live with a-
Is it 8.2, 8.2 and 8.3?
I don't even have-
On page nine.
Oh, page nine?
Nine, section eight, termination and modification. Section eight.
I'm, I'm actually missing. It's not in my set.
So it's eight, it's nine and 10, so it starts right here.
Termination, modification.
That's our standard language that we provide. It's duly noted that in different circumstances, that, that provision could create more of a headache, which I think is your point here. We can certainly take that provision out.
Is it time to update our standard contract, is what it sounds like. I mean, because it's-
I can't imagine why we would ever want to enter into a, a contract, especially a fixed fee contract, and let the, let the other party just terminate on 30 days' notice with no recourse, and then we've got to go out and rebid. Doesn't make any sense at all to me.
And what's the-
Seems right to me.
Depends on the contract, because not all contracts-
It's one of the contracts.
Right.
Basically just takes all the teeth out of the contract.
Should we take this back and review it next month?
Yeah, can we take this over?
Yeah, that's what I think. Yeah, I mean- It's a bigger issue.
Yeah, I think it needs council review and shipped back, is my suggestion.
I, I'm thinking we wouldn't necessarily have to rebid, and we'd just go with the second lowest bidder at this point. You know, if they were to terminate the contract.
Suing the second lowest bidder even wants to do it at that point. Maybe they find something, the job, it's a sticking point.
Entirely.
They don't like it, and, and now you're gonna go back and try and get somebody else to take it, and we've lost the benefit of the contract.
I mean, I think that, that the general idea is that there's, the consultant generally doesn't want to walk away from-
Couldn't, couldn't we approve it just for taking that one?
But we can approve it today by removing section 8.2.
Removing that section out.
That's fine, but I think we should, if that's our standard contract, I think it needs-
We can revise it. We can revise the standard contract.
Yeah.
Then I, I agree with that.
No problem.
It should be a lot stronger.
No problem.
We have to, we have to-
I would never do a contract for my, my firm like that.
Okay, so this, we're gonna, we're gonna remove, what, 8.1?
8.2.
8.2 is what we're gonna remove.
The city can terminate anytime, but consulting can't.
And?
Is that okay with the maker of the motion?
Yes. I'm gonna revise my motion to approve it with the, use the contingency fund and the revision to the contract, removing section 8.2.
Second.
That way we don't have to deal with it again. And then also, I think the direction of staff is to come up with a revised standard contract.
You got it.
That was the message clear, yourself.
Okay. Good catch, Mr. Barnett.
Almost missed it.
Okay.
Motion is to approve the contract. Councilman Nelson?
Whoa, whoa, removing 8.2?
Yeah, striking 8.2, using the contingency and developing a standard, you know, redevelop our standard contract. Councilman Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Mills?
Yes.
Councilman Colacott?
Yes.
Councilman Barnett?
Yes.
Mayor Fasenella?
Yes.
Carries, 5-0.
All right. We're at item 16, Villa Park Community Emergency Response Unit, which is our CERT program. Did we put in, here we go, all right. Mr. Pete Moriarty has been our volunteer coordinator for our CERT program. He was, this is a position that is appointed by the council, and he has been in this position for several years, and he has resigned. Not for bad reasons, just because he wants to move on. He's made some recommendations to what he wants this program to look like in the future, which we are going to take up in the future. But this is something that needs to be offered out to the community for anybody who would like to apply for that position. And Mr. Moriarty is in the room, and I'd like it if you could step up and tell us a little bit about the program, so the public that's watching can understand what it is. It's been quite some time since we've had that, and maybe we can drum up some interest for somebody wanting to replace your position. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ladies and gentlemen of the council, the CERT program has been working quietly in the background for several years now. Its members have been to training, extensive CERT training, a 20-hour course, and have qualified themselves, and they remain on the roster, remain active. But they do not desire to have the kind of a program that would have teams which deploy to other cities in an emergency. They are by and large home-oriented and neighborhood-oriented rather than county-oriented, if I might make that distinction. So this has been one point that the, the members have made over and over and over, and over the last several years. For that reason, we have had a rather quiet program. We, we created a level of training, which we call an awareness level, which was an eight-hour course as opposed to the 20-hour regular course, to get people up to the point where they could take care of their own home, just literally internal self-awareness and home repair and that kind of thing. This has worked well, has satisfied their needs, and so we have some 60-odd people on the roster who have had these levels of training and are prepared to work at this level. We have tried in the past to attract the interests of the volunteer firefighters, who, people who were in the volunteer firefighting program, which was disestablished by OCFA. And we still are trying to get those people back into the program. They are resident in the immediate area, in Villa Park, or the immediate surroundings. They are extremely well-trained, and they certainly, they have the potential to be training cadre for the program. So there's an enrichment aspect that we're still working on. I have offered to the council an idea for working the scout movement, the Boy Scout troop, 850 specifically, into this program to merge, as it were, the Boy Scout Training Program with the, with the CERT Training Program. This would do two things. First of all, this would get young people involved in this, this would enrich our, our overall training process. This also serves the unabashed purpose of appealing to the parents of those scouts, because if we can get the scouts in the, into the CERT program, we hope to bring the parents of the scouts in the program. And they, again, are younger people, they're more physically active, and it would be an enrichment of the program. So these are two ideas that are on the burners and that I've talked with the city manager about, and we have the, the potential of working those into the program. It's with all this in mind that I had asked to be relieved, I was appointed for a 10-month, 10-month tenure, and I've served 44 months of my 10-month tenure. And I would like someone else to have this opportunity now, to pick up those ideas and to carry this enrichment program forward. So I have made a recommendation to the council for consideration, someone who has agreed and is able to do all this. And I have a complete archive, I've kept up for the last four years, of all the records, and all the accomplishments, and all the correspondence, and what have you, trading materials. And I will pass that in good order. It's all on one CD-ROM. I'll pass that. So there'll be a complete archive passed over to the new administration, and I hope thereby to leave the program in good shape. So that's current status of it. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
First, I'd like to thank you for everything that you've done. You've done a great job with us, I mean, having 60 people. And we do have turnover, that happens. You've trained them well. I'm looking forward to the groundwork that you have left behind for us, to pass it on to the Boy Scouts, or to a generation that we're gonna be able to recirculate the CERT program within families. It's my understanding, we have about 60 radios out there. Am I right? We've got some in the back in the CERT trailer. I know that we just paid the registration on the CERT trailer, so it still must be in good shape, from what I understand. What I'd like to do, you've made a great recommendation to the council, but I'd like to open it up, if we can maybe put it in the paper, open up it to the residents, and see if there's any other applicants who might be interested in leading the program or co-leading it, as well as any applicants who want to be part of CERT, if we can reach out to the community to do that. Because we do need to find new people who want to do that. And for those of you who don't know what CERT is, it's a, to put it in simple terms, it's a safety program. So if there is a natural disaster, you'll take care of yourself first, but then you will go out, and you've been trained to take care of your neighbors and to assist them, and that's what your role would be. And that's what we're asking of our communities. We know that we would do that because we're human and we want to help, but you want to take on a role that there's somebody in your neighborhood that is gonna go out and make sure that everyone is okay in case of a natural disaster, because the odds are, if that does happen here, we're not gonna have any services for, what, about a week?
Could be.
Could be about a week. So that's what CERT is, and it does go through hours of training. It's a very good program, and it'll be great to revitalize it. Anything else from the council? Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Pete.
Thanks for all your service.
All right, so we are now to item 17. And this is, Colacott's, yes?
Are we gonna take any action on that one?
I don't, do we need to vote on his resignation?
It has a staff recommendation here.
Just to proceed with Mr. Moriarty's-
Resignation?
Resignation, recommendation. I'll continue to explore it, make sure that we meet with the vice coordinator, the, the current vice coordinator, who's Tom Dodd, she still is around. Make sure all parties get at the table. We talk about it, we discuss it. Simultaneously, we'll recruit for a position, and then we'll bring it back to council at a, at a date.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, item 17, this is Councilman Colacott's requested matter, consideration of a health payment reimbursement policy.
Okay. Perhaps in response to the recommendation of the city's audit, our city manager, Jared, adopted a new procedure, staff procedure, to cancel health insurance coverage if payments aren't received by the 15th. This still leaves staff in a difficult position to basically be a bill collector for a councilman that may be delinquent in their payments. And I think it's a better policy for us, as mentioned by some of our other speakers earlier today, to establish a council policy so that we, as a council, are responsible for administering that program. So what the, what Jared has put together is, I think, an excellent policy. It says, you know, again, that in the event that somebody is, you know, is, is delinquent on their payments, that the health coverage through the city is automatically terminated. But it does also provide, as I requested at the last meeting, a procedure where if somebody has an unusual circumstance, some, you know, some personal circumstance, they can go back to the Human Resources Committee and describe what their circumstances are, and we can possibly make, they can make a recommendation for accommodation. So I think it's a common sense policy, and it certainly takes the staff out of, from in between the council people. So I'd like to recommend that we adopt the policy as proposed by staff.
I, I would like to, I would like to make a, blanked out on the word, must be age. Want to make a superseding or modified motion? What's the word?
There's no motion. There's no motion yet. We're discussing. We have to open up the public comment.
I would like to see, I, I agree we should have a plan on it. I, I would like to see, if the payments aren't made within 15 days, I would like to see a notice go out to the delinquent party and a $50 or $100, I don't care, penalty due at that point. And if not paid, if not paid within 30 days, to the extent we can do it, policy terminates. That notice may have to go out as part of that 15-day. And if they want to come back on, they have to bring it current, pay any and all collection costs the city may have incurred, and pay a $500 fee along with advancing the premium. And if it ever happens again, it's $1,000 to get back in. Now, frankly, I can't imagine anybody would go that far, and in some ways you say, oh, why even let them come back in? But frankly, if they want to pay $1,000 bucks to the city, probably do our treasury good, and I don't think it'll ever happen, and it sets a nice, strong warning that we don't want this. So that would be my policy. 15 days, and there's a late penalty. 30 days, it terminates. You want to come back, you have to, you have to bring it all current, pay a month in advance, pick up any collection costs, and pay a $500 penalty, and after that, it's $1,000 at a time.
Rick, you said, "I made it very complicated and bureaucratic." And that's kind of what, that's kind of what, what you, what you were doing. He had a very simple policy that you've taken and made it very-
It does sound complicated, but it's not really that complicated. Bottom line is, it's 15 days, the city sends a delinquent, you notice you gotta pay a penalty. If you don't pay it by 30, the policy's gone.
But my, my understanding, when you say get back in, I don't think you can get back in. Once you, you get, you out, you're out till the next enrollment period.
That's right.
You can't, you can't come back in.
Okay, well, that's fine. It's that the way the plan provides?
You can't go back in and open enrollment.
That's, that's the way all the plans work. They, they work that way.
That's the way the plan works, Jared. You're out, okay. So fine.
When you, when you're out, you're out till the next enrollment period.
At the next enrollment period, then I'd suggest we still have a, at least a $500 penalty in addition to get back in at the next enrollment.
No, but the, the next enrollment period, you can, if you don't pay it, you, you can get back in the next enrollment period without any penalty.
Right, but I'm suggesting is we put a penalty.
But you, you, no, no one has, no one, no one else has that. When you, when you don't pay and you drop out, you can come in the next enrollment period without any penalty.
I think what's missing here is-
And I'm saying, why, why should you take a simple policy that seems to be well and, and make it more complicated?
I'm not, I'm trying to make it complicated. 15 days, you get a late fee. 30 days, it terminates. And if you want to come back in, and at the next enrollment period, there's a penalty. It costs you $500 to get back in, in addition to the normal cost.
But you can't-
What's PERS policy?
You, PERS policy is you can-
What is the policy to the city?
Open a door and open enrollment.
No, if the city doesn't pay the insurance bill. It's due on the first, is it due on the first, Michelle? Okay, it's due on the 6th. Okay, that's fine. It's due when? But make, when is it due? This is- It's due on the 10th. When is it delinquent? No, okay, is it on the 10th? No. So then, what is the cancellation procedure of health insurance, our health insurance policy?
We'll be fined.
Okay, well, that, that's what I'm asking. We don't have that, so I'm asking what it is.
We pay. We always pay.
I know you always pay, but I want to know what the policy is, if you didn't pay.
Frankly, I don't know. We've always paid on time, so I'm not sure what our penalty would be if we do not.
But it's important to know what the policy is. When are they gonna cancel? When would they cancel the city? Would they cancel the city in 30 days, 60 days, 90 days? It's a question.
I don't have that answer. We can research and get back to you if you'd like.
Maybe we ought to bring this back, because frankly-
I would like to bring it back with a, quite frankly, a legal policy, because, from the attorneys, because this is not written quite legally. I mean, it's putting liens on people's properties, which, there is due process.
My concern, frankly, is that we can have an innocent lapse, and I don't want to have somebody lose it over that. I'll give you an example. I've never been late on my payments on this. However, I went, I was out of state for a couple of weeks, and I did have one bill I forgot about. And when I was gone, it, it matured, and I was late on it, which I, you know, rarely happens. But, you know, somebody gets sick, somebody's out of town, whatever, and even if you send the notice out, now they're dinked and they're out till the next policy period if you terminate them too quickly. That's why I would like to see a sanction with some teeth, but, you know, enough flexibility where somebody doesn't truly innocently inadvertently get tagged and lose their coverage. So I'd like to see- So I'd like to see maybe a little more thought to the policy and, you know, and bring it back and let us, let us look at it.
Well, frankly, I'd rather see a policy that doesn't give a special deal to the council people. I know if I don't make my auto insurance payment, if I don't make other insurance payments by such and such a date, the policy's canceled. That's generally the way most of us residents deal with things, we make our payments. So I think the way that Jared has drafted up is a good business-like way of approaching, addressing insurance premiums.
Let's, Jared, you want to clarify in English what we're doing here?
So the city receives its monthly invoice from PERS. We are required to pay that by the 10th of the month. We pay it on the 6th of the month. Debit transferred straight to their bank account, we never even see the paper copy of it. Staff will then process the individual council invoices to current council members as well as retired council members the last week of the month for the next month. So it's November, you know, the last week of November, we'll process the invoices for December. It is then due by the 15th of December. If it is not paid, it will be terminated, unless, you know, hardship request is received. At that point, we'll hit a pause on it and we'll take it to the HR committee for direction.
See, even the carriers don't terminate it that quickly.
Yeah, they don't.
They don't terminate anywhere near that quickly. You don't lose something like an insurance policy that quickly. Somebody could be out of town, I was gone for two weeks. Again, I've never had a problem, so I've paid it all timely every time, but there needs to be a little more in it than that. And if the city needs to charge upfront, that's fine too, from my perspective, but I don't want to see a risk of inadvertent loss of a policy.
Sure, so, I mean, we can, this is all flexible, this isn't set in stone. So what we can do is charge a penalty on the 15th, charge a 10% penalty, give them another 30 days to pay it. If they don't pay within that next 30 days, so 45 total, it would be terminated.
Or even 30.
This is a council policy.
Even 30, I mean, I don't care, I just think it needs to be a period of, a period of notice. Again, I was out of town for two weeks, and I've.
Yeah, we don't have a policy now, and that, there's never been a policy, and a policy needs to be established. I would just like to see more of a formal policy versus, I think this is loosely written, I'd like to see it more formalized and with legal ease versus just simple language.
Jared, there is a policy that says if you do not, a council policy that if you're, you pay after, if you don't pay by the 15th, there's a 10% penalty. Isn't that the existing policy?
Was that policy?
That's what's written on the invoice.
It's not a policy, though.
It's not a policy.
It's not a policy.
I believe you forwarded me the policy, didn't you? Couple months back.
I do not recall, no, we, it's just written on the invoice, is that if you don't pay by the 15th, it's 10%. I'm not sure which policy.
Also, I'm concerned about the former council members, because I know a lot of them take long trips or they have long illnesses, and I don't think we want to have them in arrears either. So I, you know, I understand that we need to have a policy, there's no question about that. But I think we need to be sensitive to that, and I think that's what you're trying to do, is put in some little bit of flexibility. And that's why it kind of worked with you handling it really over all these years, and it's been going on for a long time, correct? I mean, this whole thing, it's been going on quite a while, from what I understand. But I'm concerned about the former council members too, that are paying into this, and they may or may not be able to act so quickly, and I don't think we want to jeopardize their particular coverage either. So I think if we can somehow write it a little more bluntly, I guess, is what we need to do.
I think we need a legal, I mean, it's a legal issue.
Could I make a suggestion? If you're concerned about time, rather than cutting off the next date, why not give them some grace period? Say 10 days or two weeks.
Well, if you want to do that, why don't we just provide a cutoff, say, no, no policy shall be more delinquent than X, and then should be cut off and you pursue collection.
What I'm saying is do the 15th, it's saying now it will be cut off on the 16th. What if you says, do the 15th and it'll be cut off on the, on the.
The 30th.
The 30th.
That was my suggestion.
Right, that's, that's what I'm saying. That would solve what you're saying, gives them some flexibility there, and if it's not doing that time, it's paid off, gives everybody a chance to be late occasionally.
I'm gonna open a public, public comment at this point, and then when we can come back, because we have a little more discussion. So I'm opening up public comment on 17. I don't have any blue cards, but if anyone wants to speak, please come speak.
I'm back. Hi, I'm Karen Goldberg, 10882. PERS does have a process, and, you know, it's so easy when you're part of the city, because I'm a school teacher, and so I've been part of their insurance for a long time, and my insurance comes out of my paycheck every time. So I don't even have to pay it, because it's pulled out of my paycheck, and most city employees have that benefit. They get the insurance, they don't pay their insurance, it is taken out of their paycheck and paid for them through their, through their jobs. Are you guys the same? Do you ever have to pay your insurance, health insurance? I mean, write the check. Do you have to pay your health insurance? Do you have to pay your health insurance? Are you a city employee? Do you have to pay your health insurance?
I don't have it with the city.
You don't have, do you have to pay your health insurance? Are you a city employee? Okay, but do you get it? Okay, so, there are legal and state requirements for how insurance is handled. Please, please, get some information on this, because you can't just cut off people's insurance. There's, there's state and federal guidelines you have to follow, so please make sure you do that. Make sure you're advised by someone that knows these issues, because it's a whole human resource nightmare if you cut off somebody and you're not doing it properly. The city could get sued. So please, please, we don't need any lawsuits. Please be advised, Jared. I know Jared is very smart, and I know he's very capable of doing that, so thank you. Also, another thing I'd like to discuss is I'd like to personally thank Diane, Deanna Fasenelli, Mayor Deanna Fasenelli, because when I first came to the city four years ago, I came to my very first city council meeting, and there was a, the city council, there was someone that was leaving and someone that was coming in, and the person that was leaving had a few words about the other council members, and I was shocked, I was shocked at how this council member was so distraught about another council member and how that council member had treated other council members. And I, and I was like, whoa, he's had some issues. And then I came back and went to the next council meeting, and I saw this council member, I believe it was a woman, and I saw how she acted, and I thought that was the most unprofessional council person I've ever seen, and how unprofessional she was with her council members. I want to thank this council and especially Mayor Deanna Fasenelli for her professionalism, how she has really led our city for the last two years, and how wonderful it is to watch these council meetings, because I feel like we have some civility and some, and we are moving ahead with our wonderful city and agenda, and I'm so impressed in how she handles all the people, all of us who come up for public comment, how she handles her, how professional she is with the staff, how professional she is with the other council members. And I just wanted to take this time to say, I am so impressed and I'm so proud to call her mayor, and as a Villa Park residence, I would wish that she could be mayor for, forever, because I think she's done an exceptional job. She's conducted herself very professional, and I think that, you know, this, this council, there are people here that are making a mountain out of a molehill, and I feel really sorry for you. I think, though, the rest of us, normal citizens, will understand that, yes, a policy does need to be in place, but this is just an unfortunate event, and that she is, has been so good for our city, and please, I would hope that, I hope she runs again. Thank you very much for making our city so wonderful.
Thanks, Karen.
I'm back. Generally, thank you for.
I like that you smile.
Thank you for your contribution to the Villa Park Marine Thanksgiving program.
Oh, that's the greatest thing you do.
I applaud your contribution, and I wanted to thank you.
I appreciate that. You know, the greatest thanks that everybody's ever given me is the comment when they come up, when they say, "Thank you for serving." It's a, it's a great thrill. You're serving, and I served, and there's nothing, in my opinion, there was nothing greater in my life than the honor of serving our country in uniform, so. You had me up too early. I really wanted to talk to 17.
That's okay. No, you wanted to be fair.
And I really am concerned about how our taxpayers' money is spent, to make sure there's sort of a checks and balance on it. Now, you know, we had that phrase, common practice, to be able to use our taxpayers' money to cover a shortfall. I just am concerned that that doesn't look good, as I mentioned earlier, on the LA Times or the Washington Post type of thing, unless we really got it down to a procedure, which is sort of hitchhiking on when you go into discussion on this thing. I don't really think we should place a burden on the staff or have the staff sort of be doing that. I think if we are going to spend, have to spend or come up forward, and there's an opportunity where we need to spend taxpayers' funds for, say, some situation that might come up, it really should come before the council, and the whole council, I believe, should really say, "Okay, we recognize that this is a expenditure of taxpayers' money, not for what it's intended, maybe in reverse later," but now, now the burden, responsibility is where I believe it should be, on the council, the whole council, and not down with the staff on that one. So I would, when you take a look considering the rewrite of how you're gonna do this, I would really want you to really consider carefully how we, how we expend and control expenditure of taxpayers' money, where we're really not covering, covering a specific liability that we shouldn't be covering at that moment, that will get paid way back later. So that was a point I was trying to make earlier, and so I'm glad I'm up here where the right, where the right thing is. This is where that discussion should be held, I think. So, again, thank you very much, and thank you.
Are you suggesting that, for example, if it isn't paid within the month, it'd come back and be a council item and addressed? Is that your suggestion?
I think there's some other, there's legal issues in here. She needs to do a lot of work.
There you go.
Sorry, but that's just my background, you know, I generally give orders and, you know. And that, those are all good discussions you've had, because you really got to have some clauses for that. I think the cases you bring out, or the people bring out, somebody's an illness, somebody's out of, those are all things that should be covered. I don't think we honor arbitrarily say, "We are out of the program because you missed a payment." Maybe there's reasons you missed a payment, and maybe we should go. What I'm saying is, okay, we recognize somebody, a treasurer, somebody recognizes that somebody hasn't made a payment. I don't think they should pay that bill to the state without coming to you and making sure the council knows that we do have somebody in arrears, and we're going to go ahead and make the payment. And that takes a burden, for me, that takes a burden off of them, places on, you're the, you're the overseers for the, for the city, and you should, you all should be involved in knowing that we're going to spend taxpayers' money on something that really wasn't intended for, but there's a rationale for it, and the council, the whole council approved it. I would feel better as a, and I can, and personally, from my experience, we can defend that a lot better in front of the Register or the LA Times or something like that, if they come after us and basically say, "Well, one person's making that," and that's not good. The whole council, I think, should be involved anytime we're using taxpayers' money, even temporary, for other than taxpayers' responsibility. That make, that make clear, and that help you?
Yeah, I think what that really says is maybe this ought to go back to staff and council, let them take a look at it and come back to us with something, because there's been so much discussion, and the issues now have been raised repeatedly. I think everybody's clear kind of what we're trying to get to, and I would suggest it goes back, and we take a look at it next meeting.
But the good thing is that everybody's got a chance to talk about this. I think this is a very, very good thing.
Is there any other public comment?
No, no, I, I think, yeah, you, taxpayers' money is very sensitive to.
Sir.
To everybody, and so when you're gonna spend it on covering a liability that's not the taxpayer's liability, then I, if you all agreed with that and it was brought forward to you, I think that's a good, good solution. And also, they'll work on the language about somebody who didn't make the payment, how you want to go do that, because that can be worked out. I don't think that's an issue.
Yeah, I think it's a good, good point.
That's just a, that's just a procedure. What I'm trying to get is get the responsibility for any expenditure of taxpayers' money up in front of all of you, as opposed to a staff or maybe one or two of you being involved on that. I don't think that looks good if one was auditing or got in the newspapers or something like that. I think, to me, it would look a lot better, we could defend it a lot better as a city, by basically saying the entire council met and approved that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
And Jared, now we'd have nothing, there's no arrears anywhere, correct? Correct, okay.
PERS, we still have public comment?
Yep, sorry.
Ms. Polly?
Thank you, yes, Deborah Polly, I'm back again on this item. I would like to commend Councilmember Colacott for bringing it forward. It's a primary function of the councils to set policy, to provide the proper oversight of how taxpayer dollars are set. I understand that our city manager had set a staff policy, but when it's something of this nature, particularly when the auditor's called something out, it is most appropriate for the council to come up with council policy. I would like to clarify something that was said from the lectern. I don't believe you're talking in any fashion about city staff's health insurance premiums. That's part of another deal, that's paid routinely, it's part of their pay and benefits that they've already earned, and it's paid from general fund dollars, correct? What we're talking about here is setting policies specifically and only for council members, current and past, who have elected to take the benefit of having the health insurance provided as this group policy. And that some of it is just one individual will have just coverage for just themselves, sometimes in the case of Ms. Fasenelli, it's an entire family, which of course makes the payment look much larger than the individual. So that's what we're talking about here. I wanted to be sure that the members at home that are watching this weren't confused, we're not in any way talking about penalizing staff or potentially opening up a lawsuit. This is council members who have elected, because they can freely choose to do so if they want to, and not a lot of them have, but some of them have. And, and that's what we're talking about here, people who choose to be part of it. We're not in any way compensated as council members, this is an act of great love, right? And you love what you're doing, I can see it in your faces right now. But I wanted to clarify that for our home viewing audience, because there's not going to be a lawsuit if someone is penalized for not paying their premiums on time, and yet our finance director is covering that for that individual, sometimes for a month, sometimes two, sometimes three months, and they're not incurring the penalties, but our city, our city general fund taxpayer dollars are doing that. I wanted to make that clarification. Again, thank you, Mr. Colacott, for doing your job.
So any other public comment?
I'm glad that Mayor Fasenelli had a neighbor available to come and do some cheerleading for her, but I just want to counter.
Donna Buxton, correct?
Yes, thank you. This is Donna Buxton, Dodson Way. This is important, and we count on all of you to be leaders and to set good examples. I expect that of all elected officials, and that's why it's important, and that's why, you know, it's not the amount, it's not that it's been addressed, it's that it happened. And, you know, that's why things like the City of Bell happened, because nobody was paying attention, nobody was watching, okay? And we just have to make sure that doesn't happen here, okay? With respect to public comment on the policy that you've discussed, I do think that Councilman Mills made a good point, that unlike car insurance, if your health care lapses, you can't just go and get it back, you have to wait until a certain period. So that probably needs to be taken into consideration with some type of period of time for that payment to be made. The other suggestion I might make is that an advance payment, that you pay a month in advance of the bill being due, and then when your service is done, you would be owed potentially a payment if you choose to discontinue your coverage at the end of your term. Thank you.
Any other public comment? All right, we'll bring it back to council. I have a few comments here. There are specific laws when it comes to health insurance, and those have not been discussed here, and those need to be in legal ease, no matter what policy we have. I'd like to suggest taking this back to the attorneys to write up a policy with its proper legal ease and bring it back to council next month.
I do have a couple of comments. And I very reluctantly make this comment, in a way I feel it stoops below what I like And I very reluctantly make this comment, in a way I feel it stoops below what I like to do, but, you know, I'm going to respond to a cheap political shot that was taken at me a little while ago. I'm just not going to sit here and take this. Ex-councilwoman Polly, I resent your accusation that I'm part of a clique on this council membership with the mayor and with Councilman Mills. I've had multiple conflicts with both of them. I have voted against them on a number of occasions. I've argued with them. I've supported motions by at least Bill Nelson in, in conflict with them. And I would challenge you to find that relationship between council members Colacott and Nelson. So, don't, please don't make those kind of accusations because they're groundless. Secondly, don't purport to counsel me on legal compliance or ethics. I've picked up the newspaper twice, once in the midst of your, your run for supervisor to see you involved in a DUI and, and risking public health. And then in the midst of your recent assembly campaign, I pick up the newspaper again and there's another DUI. So, that, that, that risks the public safety. And what do you think it looks like when we have a newspaper article on an assembly candidate with, with DUIs? So, you know, I, I, I haven't said anything about that, but, you know, I had to respond under these circumstances. Don't you ever lecture me on ethics or legality. That's all.
All right.
The other thing that, I echo Rick's sentiments about the fact that there, we all, five up here, do not agree with each other hardly ever, except for some routine business, which is what we're here to do. And as Rick stated, we do have a lot of discussions amongst ourselves and that is what we're supposed to do here on the dais and then we come to a resolution. And I think we do a pretty good job of, of getting, getting to the root of the matter and getting things passed and on with the city business. So, I don't think that we are a cabal by any stretch because I'm often at, at odds with the mayor and also Councilman Barnett and even sometimes myself. But at any rate, because I don't want, because sometimes you just don't want to do something. But now leave it on a lighter note and so I, I'll leave it at that.
All right, so my, I don't necessarily know, is there a motion?
Sounds like the direction we have is to rework this policy.
I mean, will we table this till next month?
Discuss with little on continued.
I'll second that. With the direction to staff—
With, with council input, please.
Yeah.
A voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Close. Eric Nutt.
Item 18. Councilmember Matters and Attendance Reports. Who'd like to start?
I'll start. I, since the last council meeting, there has, there's, I've only had one meeting and that was been the OC Sanitation Administrative. And tomorrow night, we have the board meeting for sanitation and then vector after that. That's my report. No items of any great importance except routine matters at both the vector control and the sanitation district. Thank you.
Councilman Nelson?
No, I have nothing.
Okay. Councilman Colacott?
Yes. At the Law Enforcement Advisory Committee, we're working through trying to identify how we can provide some additional law enforcement staff support, particularly during the school day when our population here in Villa Park virtually doubles because of the influx of students and their parents helping them get into our city. And so anyway, we're looking at, one of the things we've considered is trying to find a way to get a motorcycle policeman to help control traffic a little more so that our deputy can spend, can still be available to deal with other crime prevention activities. Anyway, we've looked at several different alternatives and on Thursday night, I attended the American, American, excuse me, the Association of California Counties meeting and spoke with the mayor and city manager of Stanton, who is also covered by the Orange County Sheriff and I believe, Rob, you are also their chief of police, correct?
No, I'm not there.
Okay. Well, anyway, they're covered by the sheriff and they have a couple of motorcycle officers and they, they would be willing to talk with us about, you know, working on a shared basis to, so we could try that out. So, anyway, I passed it information on to Jared and Jared, keep us posted on how those discussions come along.
Nothing new on fire. I, I've adopted a policy for Villa Park in dealing with the fire authority, which is to freeze any further compensation increases until we get a handle on the pension, which I perceive is probably in excess of a billion dollar deficit. That, that position carries on and shows up in any of the votes and that's about it. We're in the midst of union negotiations.
All right. The Serrano Water Board had a board meeting, which I went to attend to, but they changed the date. So unfortunately, they sent me the agenda and it wasn't the day that it normally is so I was unable to go. But there will be a resignation on the board. We've had one of the board members resign there, so that was the, the big news when it came from the water. The water meeting. I haven't, I got some emails and I also got some phone calls from parents at the schools because, and I don't know if this is right or wrong, but they feel that there's not been a school committee meeting and they have an issue that they would like put on the agenda, which is drugs and the students off campus. So I'm bringing it up to the school committee meeting because they said that they didn't have one last month and it's a big issue. I came out of city hall, we have a small issue going on to the left here of the library where we have high schoolers that are hanging out. They're smoking dope. They're taking drugs, they're doing what have you. And you ask how I know that and that's because I walk up there and I look at them and—
We, we did have a school committee meeting last month.
Was there anything on the agenda?
There was nothing on the agenda because no one had the agenda, but I also had Jared to also have the meeting so anything that anyone wanted to discuss, they could discuss and that we had all the standard items on it they'd normally discuss.
Okay.
So if they, if they, it's just because they didn't attend the meeting. We had the meeting and we had two people attend it.
Okay, no. I can only tell you what, I'm just repeating it.
I'm telling, I'm telling—
I don't know because I'm not—
I'm telling you what actually happened and you, you can see on, you can see on our website where it has on there about committees and it has committee agendas on there and it shows whenever the schools committee has a, a committee meeting.
Okay, well, there, this item is, is drugs and it's something they want on the next committee meeting.
Jared sends out an email every time before—
I understand, I'm bringing it forward.
Asking, asking for information about what you want on the agenda. If that's what they want on the agenda, there are ample opportunities to put them on the agenda.
I'm asking to put it on the agenda.
Okay.
Okay, I'm asking as the residents ask. We do have an issue here. Rob, I'm bringing it up, certainly the sheriff department knows it. I called 911 the first time after I saw the, you know, the case with the, the needles and the shenders, then went by the next day laying on the floor with the, smoking their joint, smoking their pot. I asked them to leave at that point. It's an issue, people coming into the library. They're getting afraid to walk into the library. I brought it up to the city manager and the issue is where does the liability, you know, begin and end? It's kind of a gray area with the school because the kids are coming home. So it is an item that they want to discuss and certainly the sheriff is there, so I'm bringing that to everyone's attention.
But I'm saying, why wouldn't they bring it up then when Jared sends out the, the email requesting?
You know, I can't, I can't answer for the parents. Okay, maybe they're not comfortable with you. I don't understand, I'm just, I'm just bringing it up. I didn't ask them. I brought it to the city manager, I'm bringing it up in a public forum here also. All right, you can ask. We had a flu shot clinic for the first time here in Villa Park and it was very successful. Thank you, Kim, for your assistance. We had two volunteer nurses that do not live in the city of Villa Park, wasn't able to find someone in the city of Villa Park. So we did have two volunteer nurses who work at SHOC that live in the city of Orange who worked here for four hours and we were so excited, we gave out 160 shots is what we gave out. And in fact, the first person who got a shot was a 103-year-old woman who walked from the car without a walker. It was spectacular. The last person who came in that we were unable to give a shot to because I told the nurses to go home and he walked in at 7:59 was Todd Spitzer, our chairman, and he walked in and he says, "Where, where's the shots?" And I said, "They're gone." He says, "But it's 7:59 and I let them go early." They were done, so he did not get a shot, but he did come to get a shot, so I thought I would mention that. That is all I have.
I had a question. Who resigned from Serrano?
Woody.
Oh, he did?
He did. Resigning December 31st.
Did he say why?
Just time to move on.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, time to move on. That was it. Been on there a long time. All right, when it comes to the next item, we have item 19, mayor and council member members, it's the election of mayor and mayor pro temp. Can we have a staff report here?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm recommending a new-to-us procedure for the city council's reorganization. In the past, the reorganization has generally occurred in December and the new mayor presented his or her committee assignments at the following meeting, typically in January, and both were effective immediately. There's nothing right, there's nothing wrong with this procedure. It's just the city council's procedure. However, the city council policy manual states that city council reorganizations take place in November and I'm recommending that we follow this moving forward. The policy manual does not address committee assignments other than the mayor shall provide recommendations for yearly appointments. Doesn't give a time or a place. I suggest that we shift from the immediate appointments, if we reorganize tonight, it would be effective a night, to a calendar year appointment, January 1 to December 30. This provides the opportunity for the mayor to be the mayor for all the events throughout the years. The boat parade is typically held on or around the installation meeting. Just depending on that meeting and the dates, there's a chance a seated mayor could not participate as a mayor in one of those events. So if we shift to, you know, this new-to-us procedure, tonight at November's meeting, the city council would reorganize and then at December's meeting, the new mayor will present their committee assignments, each effective January 1. However, during election years is when we run into problems, typically during the election year since we consolidate with the, the county. They have, I believe it's 28 days to certify the election results, which puts us near the end of November, beginning of December. Typically, the reorganization occurs the first or second week of December and then we hold the city council meeting the third week of December. Again, we would reorganize at that meeting, it would become effective and then the following meeting, the, the new mayor would present their committee assignments. The alternative to this new-to-us procedure is that we just amend our practice or amend our code to reflect the current practice. Since 2002, I believe we counted, we've only reorganized in mayor or in November four times, however, the code has said we would, you know, reorganize in November. There's no right or wrong procedures, I'm just recommending to make it cleaner that we reorganize, reorganize in November and then committee assignments December, both effective dated January 1. It's up to you.
So, the last time this was reorganized was 2009 in November. We have 2002, 3, 7, and 9. So it's, majority's always been in December. Why is this being brought up now when, is there an issue and who brought this up?
There's no issue. I brought it up because we've been reading the code and sticking to the code.
When some, okay, all right.
It's a council policy matter. I mean, do you want to reorganize as, as we've been doing or, you know, go with this new-to-us procedure? If we go to this, you know, new procedure, nothing needs to change. If we go to our current practice, we'd have to amend the council policy manual.
Well, I think we should look at amending more or less what we've been, we've been doing the last six, seven years. And, and the, the issue of, of at, in December on election years, of course, is where we have the, the problem of having no coverage on some of these committees that we have to go to. Or there's some provision where the former council members are still doing them if they, if they are on them for whatever reason. And that's why I thought that the, when I, I spoke to you about this after reading the agenda, that we should look at that and just basically codify what we're doing as far as the city code. That way it's, I think the folks have been used to it. They see the first or second Tuesday of December that we do the mayor oral and mayor pro temp selection, basically. And then we have the, the regular third Tuesday of December meeting so that we avoid the Christmas rush, of course. That's the only reason, I, I agree with you, there's no rhyme or reason and that some, that, that, we just do it every year that way. I mean, the mayor oral selection is very quick, I mean, and if there's new members, let's, we take pictures too, right? We typically do that. So, I, I thought it would be simple and we're accustomed to it. I don't know what the public thinks about it, but I, I think that, I'm sure we'll get more comments. Thank you.
All right, I'm going to open that up to public comment. Seeing none, we'll bring it back here.
I, I guess I'll make a comment then. You know, this frankly doesn't make a lot of difference to me, however, there's a procedure that's developed because it works apparently and it's been in play for a while. So I think we should just conform whatever our policy is to meet our practice. I think that's what Greg's saying, but I'm not sure.
Yeah, basically, yes. And, and it gets back to the, what, the, you know, the issue of, of the election board in the county and that just that we don't, we don't get mixed up with that. But I know you'll be watching that because we have to and, and there's, there could be even tight races here, so it can happen.
I should probably add to that, that, again, I, I just, I just don't think this is much of an issue, but it's on here, so we got to deal with it. And I did have some discussion with Jared and went through a number of different alternatives and, and there's always a little glitch here and there and a bug and it looks like what we're doing has been worked out to avoid those. So, to that extent, if it works, don't, you know, if it isn't broken, don't fix it. So if the manual's broken, fix that.
But we had, go ahead, Bill.
Yeah, it, it doesn't make any difference to me. I think we should follow the policy. If we want to do it in December, then we should just change the policy to reflect that.
I agree.
That's, that's what we should do.
Well, I move to, to keep our practice as is and change the policy to reflect the month of December as we've done it for the last, the majority of the last 15 years. And I could only go back that far because that's, oh, that was on the website. I can go back past.
Yeah. What, what we would do then, I guess next time, we'd bring back the policy and then we would approve the policy and then we'd have the election after that.
And the election's done in December.
That's what I'm saying, so the next meeting in December. So we'd bring back the policy, approve the policy and then do the election after we approve the policy.
Well, whether it's approved or not, we've always done it in December and it's been done like that, so it could be done unless there's an objection here.
It would just be nice if we bring the policy back and we approve the policy first.
Yeah, this is going to get her done. I would most likely put this policy on the consent calendar—
Right, exactly.
And then the last item of every December meeting is typically—
Would be the election.
That's what it always is.
Then the election, mayor, mayor.
So I'll second the motion.
Okay.
Mayor Fasenelli?
Yes.
Councilman Nelson?
Yes.
Councilman Colacott?
Yes.
Councilman Barnett?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Temp Mills?
Yes.